All right, if I can call this meeting to order, ask you all to rise. And Ms. Marmine, if you'd lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is the special meeting of the Board of Selectment, July 29, 2015, and we're here for an update from the Fairfield Ludlow High School Building Committee. Chair ready to go?
Yes, sir.
If you'll just introduce yourself and the floor is yours.
Okay. Again, I'm Mark Donald, and the chairman of the Fairfield Ludlow High School Building Committee for the renovation and construction of cafeteria, new roof, and additions. So we have a PowerPoint presentation over here. I don't know if you can see it sufficiently from there.
I think we have some chairs set up over here for us to...
Give you a minute so that you can face it. And just to set up the presentation, we designed it to be interactive so we can stop and you can ask questions as we go and, you know, review the agenda of the presentation as well. Some of the chances are some of the questions will be answered down the road, but we can advance back up as clarifying questions and/or comments are noted.
Okay.
Very good. So the history of the project is... Oops, went the wrong way. Given the purpose and the building committee, the ed specs, the approved funding amount by the town bodies, the project team, the three phases, the original schedule versus the actual schedule. Phase one, cost timelines, which again is the roof part of the project. Phase two, which is the cafeteria addition and classroom construction, the budget history, the phase two construction cost variance, that's where the biggest difference in the costs were. The status of phases one and two, which is nearing completion, and then the current status of phase three. As, just a refresher, the building committee was created in June of 2012, the charge modified July 2013, and then the committee came together in July and August of 2013. The ed specs were approved by the Board of Education in February of 2013. So essentially, we are almost two and a half years into the project itself. The approved funding amount came from an opinion of probable construction costs done by Silver Petroselli. The town engaged then, it was completed in January of 2013, and the town approved in May of 2013 the amount of $11,630,700. And that funding was based on that opinion of probable costs. The project team was engaged in January of 2014. The architect is Perkins Eastman. The construction manager is Gilbane Building Company. The owner's representatives are Cadis U.S. Incorporated. And the environmental consultant is AMC Environmental. Of course, we had to get started on the environmental impact with the, in regards to remediation of the PCBs, et cetera, right away so that we could get as quickly through the bureaucracy of EPA, et cetera. So again, the project is the phase one, as it is known, is design and replace 80% of the roofs. I think the 20% is a result of the roof blowing off in January of 2013. What was it, 14? And so 20% was already replaced, and this was to replace the other 80%. The phase two was the classrooms and cafeteria addition and construction. The cafeteria was designed to accommodate population growth as well as the revised high school classroom schedule to ensure that every student has the opportunity to eat lunch and also have room for it, to renovate the existing cafeteria as well as expanding it, and then to add four classrooms along with two science labs and preparation areas. And then phase three windows was to identify and investigate the presence of PCB and asbestos and design a remediation plan and then install the appropriate windows. And here's where we kind of get into the original schedule versus the actual schedule. As you can see, some of the delays, I won't read each line, some of the delays were a result of scheduling with OSF, as well as phase one in particular. The original bid that came in was, came in July 2nd and was a million dollars above the initial estimate because of the high season of bidding as well as the compressed schedule for doing the project. So in order to get better prices, we decided to rebid in November, and the costs came in much more favorably and aligned with the original budget. And that construction started over spring break this year and is currently on schedule to complete by the time classes start here in September. Phase two, we had a little more issue with getting the EPA approval, and so some of that along with the appropriate approval from OSF resulted in some scheduling delay. And we bid the project out in December, or excuse me, we got the bids back in December of 2014 and ended up, as we'll get into, we rebid some of that project out in order to maintain more savings. So the construction started the day of Christmas, Christmas winter break this year and is currently on schedule to complete by the time classes start in September. Any questions or comments about that phase?
No, I like the format. Thank you for laying it out this way. Do we get hard copies of this as well?
Sure, sure, we can give you our copies.
That'd be great.
Absolutely. Okay, so again, we got the original bids in July of 2014, and these were over the budget developed by Silver Petroselli and also the, over the budget of the initial design documents. So we went back and got revised roof bids in November, and as I said, the final roof bid number was $2,230,000 versus the $3,200,000 of the original bids that we received in July. And those costs were included in the GMP that was approved in January 2015. Okay, so here's where we get into a little more detail because this is where the project, the costs increased significantly. We reviewed, as a committee, we reviewed six conceptual design schemes, two of which were similar to the, or were the Silver Petroselli recommended designs, as well as four that were designed by Perkins Eastman. We evaluated them based on appropriateness to the school schedule, the impact on the current building, as well as the long-term benefits to the high school program. So we elected on the final, the current, the current design. The conceptual design was done, that was February 2nd, 2014, and the design development was completed in June 2nd, 2014. And that's where we began to see the budget increase quite a bit. So we did, we value engineered it. At that point, the design development was approximately $6 million, I believe, which was well over the original budget of...
3.8.
3.8, thank you. 3.8 million dollars. So we value engineered and at that point got the budget back down to about $5.1 million. Still obviously very concerned about the increase in cost. And the design of the, was approved by the Board of Ed on July 15th, however, that was not the budget as indicated. Also, the timeline of the EPA submissions is indicated there, July 3rd, September 10th, and September 30th, and the EPA approved it on October 17th. The original bids we received was December 4th, and as I said earlier, we ended up rebidding three packages, concrete, general trades, and electrical, and we saved around $500,000 and began the project on December 23rd, 2014. All those costs are included in the GMP. Any questions about that? All right, so the budget history. The construction manager developed a high-level construction budget of the classroom additions based on unit costs and recent comparable construction costs for similar projects for a selected scheme. As I mentioned, at the selected, when we selected the current budget, the overall estimate was 3.8 million and the overall budget was 11.8 million versus 11.6. So when we selected it at design phase, it was approximately 2% over. And we updated the first selectmen and superintendent regarding that on March 26th. The construction manager, again, provided the design development construction estimate, and that totaled $6.1 million. So again, at that point in June of 2014, we said we need to begin coming up with alternative plans in order to meet the budget and ensure that the students were able to be put in the seats in September of 2015. So we, as a committee and as a team, we came together and it was determined that it would be extremely difficult, if not impossible, to get all three phases done within the current budget. So we communicated, and the school superintendent, again, expressed urgency because of the population growth as well as the new high school schedule that phases one and two were of utmost importance and needed to get done in order to serve the students of Fairfield. This is just a recap of the meeting. We discussed myself, Town Director of Purchasing, Fairfield Public Schools Manager of Construction, Superintendent of Schools, and Director of Operations, and our discussion about a revised strategy to deal with phase three partially while fully completing phase one and two, which at that point was estimated, we were estimated about $2.5 million over budget in June of 2014. Then just goes over the dates of updates. We went to the Board of Education and asked for a change in ed specs to allow a single layer roof membrane for the roof replacement based on a solar panel grant, and this was done in consulting with roofing experts as well as the construction manager, and that ensured that the solar panels, which will be installed, will provide an extra layer of protection instead of the two-ply membrane that was supposed to be installed. Again, this, so solar panels was not part of our project. It just was, it allowed us to save some costs while providing the same amount of protection to the asset.
So can you, how much, do you, do you estimate you saved by using the solar panels versus the extra layer?
$500,000.
There's more than that.
Was it more than that?
It was about $800,000.
$800,000 by going from the single ply to the double ply. And again, there's no, according to the experts, there's no less protection than if I had the two ply. And the, my understanding, again, the solar panels are not part of the project, but the, when the solar panels are installed, they lay, they put another layer of protection down. So...
When will they go on?
The solar panels?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, do you recall that? I've learned I have to speak in mic. I, Samuel Vito, Manager of Construction Security and Safety for Board of Ed. Right now, the company that's working on that is still in their permitting process with the power company for what's called their interconnect of their new electrical system into the grid. That should be wrapped up fairly soon. The panels themselves should start installing in the fall past the construction of this project. So they, Gilbane will complete the project, we'll get our warranty on our roof, and then another company will come in and do the solar panels.
How's time will go by between one project and the completion of the solar panels?
As little as possible, actually. There might be some overlap because there's some work that does not actually affect the, putting a panel on the roof. There's some conduits and things like that that have to be set up that won't interfere with Gilbane's work. So there will be some overlap probably later in August or early September. But essentially, there's a disconnect between the two of them. There shouldn't be a problem coordinating between the two entities.
And there's no issue with that time gap on either the warranty or the, you know...
No.
Construction of the first roof?
Right. The company that's doing the solar panels understands that our warranty has to be in place for the roof before they, before they can start loading the roof, period. Gilbane and their crews and their vendors have to be allowed an opportunity to have a warranty walkthrough by the manufacturer, get their punch list, take care of the punch list items, and have a reinspection and issuance of the warranty before anything can go on that roof. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there a presentation of Board of Selectment in October of 2014?
I believe so. I think, yeah, I think we met early October and then presented later October. So the overall project cost increases are primarily due to increased construction costs from conceptual estimate to the final bid. Final bid construction, final construction bids, December 23rd, in the amount of $5,902,273, excuse me, 902,273, represent an increase of $2,236,529 over the conceptual design estimates in February of 2014.
Is that increase just the construction cost or is that a fully loaded number?
That's...
Just construction?
And here are the primary drivers of the growth. As you see, a lot of them are driven by the scheduling and the compressed time scheduling Construction manager estimates that this is probably a 12- to 13-month project. It's been completed in eight months. So escalation was estimated as $200,000. Winter conditions and laying the concrete, $180,000. The accelerated schedules, $600,000. Increased square footage of cafeteria, $180,000. The Webster wing, increased square footage is $220,000. The warehouse steel premium, again, which is a scheduling concern, we estimated $200,000. The drainage utility relocation on the bid docs that was not carried in the concept study is another $245,000. The HVAC electrical, concept assumption to design documents discrepancy was $255,000. And the additional temporary construction and the phasing costs that were not carried in the concept study were $150,000. Questions?
So what is, I'm sorry, what's the difference between escalation costs and accelerated schedule costs? What is the...
The accelerated cost and, yeah, that's probably...
My name is Peter Mann and Gilbane Building Company. Escalation is really the cost increase as a result of bidding the job later. It's the cost of living increase in the project. So originally, we were supposed to bid the job sometime in August, September timeframe. We didn't bid the job till November. Unfortunately, we hit this glitch in 2014 where construction costs, you know, over the past couple of years, construction costs have been relatively stable. 2014 saw close to a 5% increase over the year. So these numbers are really an estimate. Because we didn't bid it early, these are really our best guess at the increases that the job experienced, but we applied a factor of 2.5% because of the six-month delay in scheduling on the total cost, and it came to about $200,000.
You had mentioned that parts of this were rebid in order to capture lower costs.
Correct.
So even with that rebidding, you still have approximately $200,000 escalation?
Yeah, and I'll just clarify the rebidding. There were a number of packages where the low bid was disqualified because of...
Not meeting ed specs or...
Not meeting the actual paperwork that needed to be submitted with the bid. The dollars were significant, and it was a determination made between Gilbane and the purchasing department here. Let's go ahead and rebid it, and hopefully, you know, we'll recap that, and we did. There's always a risk in that, because sometimes people see what the low bid is and, you know, increase the numbers, but we were able to save the $500,000 on those three packages. I think it was concrete, electrical, and...
Site work.
Site work, I guess. Any other questions about the, so your question was, what is the accelerated schedule?
Well, I get what, I wasn't sure what the difference was between escalation, that's related to costs with the bids, not escalating the timeframe, versus the accelerated schedule, which is the timeline.
So the accelerated schedule, we basically, when we conceptualize this job, we conceptualized the 12- to 13-month schedule. We compressed the job to eight months in order to meet the end date. It's funny, in construction, the end date never changes, the beginning date often does. But, so, just based on the fact that we had to cram that much work, inefficiencies, we estimated that, and again, it's an estimate because we don't have a bid from a 12-month schedule to compare it to, but we estimated that at about $600,000.
What types of things would be in that?
Overtimes, premium time, trade stacking inefficiencies because of multiple tradesmen working in the same place at the same time as opposed to sequencing all that work out. And it's, you know, there are a lot of metrics to try and evaluate that. We basically applied a factor of, I think, 15%, I'm sorry, 10%. We applied a factor of 10% to the total cost just for the accelerated schedule. So, you know, you can get into a lot more detail on analyzing that if we were in a claim situation, but this is really a best guess.
And what period of time changed to drive that? You went from what number of months to what number of months again?
I think 12 to 13 months to eight months.
And what's your, what's your, the five-month delay in the bid going out?
EPA.
Completely on the EPA side, nothing on the construction side, nothing on the committee side, nothing on the town side?
I think it was all driven by EPA approvals, and because there was PCBs greater than 50 that were required in the demolition to build the new addition, they needed EPA approval, and that took six to eight months to get. So OSF, the Office of State, Office of School Facilities, would not allow us to go to bid until EPA approval was in hand.
Okay, so that's the sole driver for that delay. Is that what you're confirming? I saw both you guys nod.
Yes.
Okay.
And then really, the last, the next of the last two, the drainage, utility relocation, the HVAC and electrical concept assumptions in that original concept estimate, that concept estimate was really based on an eight-and-a-half-by-11 sketch of the additions. The assumptions that were made really came out to be different than what ended up on the design drawings. So represented close to $500,000 on growth.
So just give me some perspective, because you mentioned the last three items, so meanwhile, like $650,000, $700,000. What, how common are those kind of cost overages, those discrepancies between the design concept and then the actual when you get into the nitty-gritty of construction? Is this something that's kind of an outlier, or is it common? Or should we have expected something like this or have it built into the contingency?
I think that's, that's the, the answer is it should have been built into the contingency. And that concept estimate, typically when we do a concept estimate, we have 10% to 15% owner contingency for this type of growth. In the concept estimate that we provided in February of 14, we were really trying to target the budget that we had available, and the contingency was probably insufficient for the level of detail that we were estimating.
If I may?
Sure.
This, this $2.2 million, that's in excess, and that's in excess of the original construction cost estimate and the contingency, correct? So you, where is the, where is the contingency accounted for in this calculation of before and after? Does that make sense, the question? Like, this is 2.2 more than you thought it was going to be, right?
Right.
Okay, is what you thought was going to be, is that number inclusive of what contingency was in the original project? So this is all above and beyond the original construction inclusive of the, inclusive of the original contingency on the construction side?
The original 3.8 estimate had a, had a minimal contingency. The costs, the 2.23 value is actually exclusive of contingent to. So this is an evaluation of the bid numbers that we had.
Okay.
And if I can clarify that, because one of the points that took me a while to get my head around was that the entire project, the original budget was 11.6. This component of it was 3.8 for the 11.6. So we're, this is saying we're over 2.2 out of the 3.8, or roughly 66% over.
On that phase.
On that phase. But this is, this overage is all driven into that 3.8 million dollar budget.
Right. So this... So this is, this is roughly six against the 3.8?
Correct. So sort of the contingency you're talking about would have been in the owner's contingency, would have been part of the soft costs, were part of the balance of the budget, balance of the 11.6, not necessarily included in these specific construction estimates.
Okay.
Sheila, does that make sense?
That's helpful. Thank you.
All right, so just, this, this is not 2.2 out of the 11, even though it is, it's 2.2 out of 3.8.
Right. Yep, I got it. Just briefly, on the last four items, it's hard to read, so it looks like, you know, it's the warehouse, the drainage, the HVAC, and the additional temporary construction. Those numbers add up to roughly $950,000 if I'm, let me see, $5,000, $850,000. Can you just walk through each of those items and help me understand, for each one, why the variance is there? Is it because the number that was originally included was low, or was there not anything included for that particular item? And if so, where were the omissions, where were the misses? Where were the misses, and what did they do to them?
So starting with warehouse steel premium, because of the fact that we bid the job so close to the time that we had to build the job, the steel contractor was unable to detail the steel, order the steel from the mill, custom cut, and receive the steel and fabricate, you know, cut the holes and poke the flanges and everything else. They had to use warehouse steel. So the question during our scope review, when we talked to the low steel bidder was, what's the premium that we had to spend because of the fact that we had to go to warehouse steel? And the response was approximately $200,000. So that was a response that we got from the successful steel bidder.
Okay, so what is the steel number today in the end? What is the total steel number?
I don't have...
So it's something plus 200 is what I'm hearing.
Yes.
So I'd like to know what the something is and what the something plus 200 is.
Um, I have...
That represents the conceptual miss, right?
Well, it's not a conceptual miss, it's really driven by schedule.
Okay.
So that one is really driven by schedule. And the successful structural steel bid was $590,000.
Okay, so it's roughly 600K, of which you're attributing 200, or a third of that, to this premium due to timing?
Right.
Okay.
Thirty-three percent upcharge for that, so 25% of the overall eventual cost, actual cost. But 33% penalty because the design didn't include in using it from a warehouse versus getting it.
Got it.
Did I say that right?
Yeah, I think you did. I think we just said a different thing, because I'm looking at four plus two to get to six, so that's a 50% increase. Is that looking, I think we're saying the same thing.
Yes, you're saying the same thing.
I'm saying six plus two to get to eight, is what I was saying.
No, so the $590,000...
Includes the two.
Includes the two.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, so it's four plus two.
So that's a 50% design premium.
Correct.
Now, keep in mind, this is, this is talking to the low bid, the low bidder, and, you know, assuming he's telling us everything that he, you know, is being totally transparent in how he did the job.
Right.
But, so the next item is...
Yeah, but a similar conversation for those other three items, if you would please.
Well, yeah, so the next one is drainage, utility relocation. The sketches that we got initially really showed no site work. It showed no additional or additional drainage, or there's a small detention basin that's going to go behind the cafeteria. Those things were not conceptualized at all on the initial concept. So our estimators didn't carry any costs on that. And should we have? Probably. There probably should have been some level of site items carried in the conceptual estimate, but they weren't. So that's basically the same explanation for the HVAC and electrical.
Before we move on now...
Sure.
Of that $250,000, what is that total number now?
You're with me?
Uh huh.
$650,000.
Okay, so, and that's inclusive? So it's 400 plus the $250, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The same explanation really goes for the HVAC and electrical. What we did a conceptual estimate on was an architectural floor plan. There were no grills and registers and fan coil units and BAVs and rooftop units or anything shown on the conceptual drawing. So when we estimated this, we took comparable projects that we built in the past, used a unit price per foot, which is typically done at that conceptual level, and the, when we got to the DD phase, the design development phase, when all of those components, the rooftop units and the air handlers and the grills, registers, and diffusers were all shown, our estimate grew by a total of $255,000. So that was really just a result of the development of the design between concept and DD.
Okay. And again, where'd that go from?
Plumbing and HVAC was a million one, almost a million two.
So that, and that's the total, including the $250?
Yes.
Okay. So roughly, I can do my math, roughly $850 plus $250 gets you to 1.1, give or take some change. Okay, thank you.
And then lastly, temporary construction, because of the fact that we had to keep the school in operation, there was a fair amount of temporary partitions, temporary walls, exterior staircase that had to be built on the exterior of the job. Those things were not included in the concept estimate. And they were included in various bid packages.
Subsequent to that.
Subsequent to that. So, and it would be unfair to try and pinpoint one specific bid package because they were probably inserted, those scope items were inserted in a number of different bid packages.
And is that 150, is that the ending number as well? Or is there something plus the 150 to get you to that number? Or is that just the difference?
That, that's really the difference.
That's really it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm good on that, yeah. Thank you.
All right, so just a quick summary of where we are. The construction work again started in December of 2014, December 23. The Webster addition will be ready for occupancy August 28, and we are still currently on schedule with that, one month gap. The cafeteria addition will be complete by September 1. Of course, the start of school is September 3. Roof replacement will also be complete as well. And phases one and two are scheduled to be complete and within budget as of the July 8 update, the total roof funding amount. And then the costs are broken down individually. Total construction, $9,746,162. Architect and engineering services, $666,485. The owner's consultants fees, $725,843. The FFNE is $140,866. And the owner's remaining contingency as of July 8 is $351,344. Questions about that part?
So net-net, if you want to go back...
Sure.
The original number, what was the, from slide one, what was the original?
$11,630,700.
It's the same number, yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. So net-net, at the end of the project, we have $351,000 left in contingency, is that what you're saying?
As of July 8.
As of July 8.
And we have spent some since then.
Can you walk us through what's happened since this slide was prepared with the $351?
I would defer to Tom Bebe. Tom Bebe from Arcadis, the town's owners' representative. We have approximately identified approximately $75,000 to $80,000 worth of change orders that will come out of the owner's contingency as of today. What we don't know is how many more change orders or additional costs need to come out of owner's contingency for the balance of the project. We expect it to, we don't anticipate any. There might be some accelerated costs. Some of the additional charges, we evaluate those to determine whether they come out of the construction manager's contingency or the owner's contingency. But at the moment, we've identified about $80,000 to come out of that number as of today.
Which would add, which would end up in the construction costs?
No, that, well, yes, it'll be transferred from contingency to construction costs, yes.
All right, so that takes it down to two, to seven years, so...
Yes.
And what else is out there? Nothing?
Well, not that we know of.
What else might be out there, again?
Possibly accelerated costs, overtime costs for, to make up for weather delays or something of that nature. If it, if we can't, if it's not coverable in the construction contingency, we might, the building committee may authorize some expenses to help us keep on track. We don't anticipate that, but that's, that's about the only thing we can anticipate at the moment. There aren't many pieces left to be, everything is blown up, there aren't many pieces left to install, and so the risk is fairly low.
The risk is low, yet we don't have enough money in the budget to account for the expense of overtime for the last five, six weeks? Is that what you're saying?
No, 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 we don't have any overtime expenses to pay. The $80,000 are changes to the construction, they're not, they're not labor costs.
That part I get, but you talked about acceleration costs, it could happen between now and Labor Day.
Yes.
What might they be, and where are they currently in the budget?
Let me address it. Again, Peter Manning, Gilbain, the, any acceleration cost, premium time would come out of the construction manager's contingency, which is over and above what is left in the owner contingency. Owner contingency really would cover any change orders, any additional scope of work, any, you know, additional doors cut in or additional, you know, change orders. So we don't really anticipate any of that. In a renovation, sometimes there's some unforeseen conditions when you open up a wall. I feel relatively comfortable that we've opened up all the walls that we're going to open up. So that, that remaining contingency is still pretty much intact. There's $160,000 worth of construction manager contingency. From that, we have, we have already assumed certain value of acceleration between now and the end of the job. So we're already projecting. So with the projection of that acceleration, we have $160,000 left in construction manager contingency. So I feel relatively comfortable, unless the building committee wants to, you know, add a fume hood or, or something like that, that the owner contingency should be in pretty good shape, but there still is available construction manager contingency to handle acceleration.
Thank you for that clarification. While you're up here, could you please walk me through the architectural and engineering fees and the owner consultants' fees, both in dollar and in percentage of the budget, and how they compare to market and how they're specific to this job?
Well, the, I need to look, I need to look back up to give us some details. The owner's consultant fees, are you asking what, some examples of what's in there?
What's in there? And specific to this job, are they high, are they low? Specific to market for this type of project, this type of timeline? I'm just trying to see what type of overall value the town and the project have received from these expenses.
Okay. So I'll start with the architect and engineering fees. The architect's fee is a percentage of construction. It's about, it's 5.5% of construction percent. That's in line with market conditions. That's not extraordinary.
And that's, is that based on the budget or the actuals?
It's based on the actuals.
So if we accelerate the project in order to make a deadline, the architect is paid one?
Well, if the overtime, if the overtime costs have paid out of construction costs, the answer is yes.
What was the situation in this case?
I don't know if you've had to pay the accelerated construction costs yet.
We've paid overtime.
Okay. You know, conversely, if the architect designs, designs a feature and it doesn't get approved, they've done the work, but they don't get paid for it. So there are probably some washes in that process. If they design an element and it gets approved for a lesser amount, or they do options, they design options, the percentage...
I understand. The reason for the question is we're 60% over on the construction this phase. That's a rather large bonus for the architect.
Yes, I don't, I don't, not all...
I'm not assuming they did anything wrong to earn that, but they didn't do anything right to earn that.
Right.
So to follow on to Mr. Tetchow's question, just to be clear, as that 9.7 goes up, the 5.5% remains constant, and the 666 would go up with it. Is that?
Correct.
That's correct?
Yes.
And that, there's no cap on that, and there's nothing that kept it from not including certain things? Or is it...
Can I just clarify?
Please.
So the nine...
I think you need to be speaking to the mic.
Sorry. Peter Manning. So the 9.7 includes the full value of the construction contingency already. So if the construction contingency isn't spent, it gets returned in part to the owner. So it shouldn't go up any more than that because the construction contingency is already projected to be spent in that number. And if it's not, it returns back. So it would actually probably negatively impact the fee for the architect.
But it would have to go a long way to make up for a 60% overage.
Sure.
I guess the issue is there's a disincentive for the architect, and it's kind of a bonus for the architect if those costs go up. There's a disincentive to keep the cost down.
Well, it's, for my issue, they're making more money on, you know, like the stock market. They're not doing anything about it. The market goes up or goes down, and they kind of win.
Right.
It's different than paying for services received. We're paying 60% more, and we didn't receive any more services from the architect.
And that's standard?
This is Mr. Hiley's question.
Right, exactly.
It is, you're shaking your head, it's not standard?
I don't believe, I don't know what percentage is, what percentage of design projects include a percentage of fee, and not all of them do. So I wouldn't go so far as to say that's a standard approach in the design and construction industry.
But just from a key learning or moving forward with other projects, we should be looking at this, putting a caveat in our contract with an architect upfront, correct?
Yes.
Well, I'm trying to look at, like Riverfield School, when we added on the gym for the $2 million because of the PCB, at least there was more work that had to be done in order to design the gym and the additional...
Right, so they, they made better...
So it makes sense that they had to do more work, so the project went up, they'd get some percentage of that. That, to me, makes sense, or is more rational. This, the project just cost more because we accelerated the schedule, escalated some things because the timing changed. The architects didn't spend any more hours or incur any costs themselves.
Right.
They literally, you know, if the cost of steel goes up, they're reaping the cost, as it did here, they're reaping the benefit of the increased cost of the steel, but it's the same amount of steel they designed.
That's correct.
So that's what I meant about being analogous to playing the stock market. Costs went up, price of things went up, they get paid more, they didn't do any more work for that.
Agreed. So in essence, you can take that previous slide at $2.2 million, if, for whatever reason the things weren't there before, or were underestimated prior, you know, there's a 5.5% increase based on all that stuff, right? Just on those items?
Okay.
Thank you for that. Could you continue on the next piece, please?
In response to one of your questions about the architect's fee structure, there is a cap on reimbursable expenses. They've exceeded that cap, so they no longer get paid reimbursal expenses that they've incurred on the project.
What type of reimbursable expenses? What things would fall in that category, and what's the cap?
The cap was a dollar, was a dollar amount, I'm sorry. I don't recall if the cap's a dollar amount or percentage. The cap, reimbursable expenses include things like reproduction costs, costs of drawings and prints, copies, travel, anything else. And they've exceeded that, so they're no longer getting paid reimbursal expenses.
But those aren't big dollar things, are they? I didn't think so.
No, no. It has to be a percentage, you can't be dollar amount because it would be difficult to identify a dollar amount at the beginning of the project.
Can you go back to the question about standard industry practice on architectural fees? I'm not sure I understood your answer. It's not always a percentage, is it?
No, no.
Then what is, what is standard practice?
One option is to, for the architect to be reimbursed based on design phases, based on the scope of the work, of the scope of the project. Sometimes it's based on square footage, and it's broken down by design phases. So conceptual design, schematic design, design development, construction documents. Sometimes also it includes, it would include a design fee for pre-con... Sometimes also it includes, it would include a design fee for pre-construction. And so, so that's another approach is dollar amount based on square footage, they've broken down by those design phases.
So along the lines of, to make the math simple, it's a ten million dollar project. We think upfront, that's the original estimate. We're paying you five percent, that's five hundred thousand dollars. So that's going to be your number, give or take a couple minor additions or deletions to that.
Correct.
But if the project comes in at eight or comes in at fifteen, there's not going to be this material swing in your fee based on a percentage driven by the change in cost.
Correct.
So would that be, is that industry standard? Is it closer to standard?
It's closer.
I'm just trying to understand what we should have done or what we could do better.
That's more controllable and it's more closer, it's more close to industry standard. You asked about some of the others, so.
Yeah, the consultant's fees.
Owner's consultant fees.
That's you.
That includes me.
Right.
It includes environmental testing. It includes builder's risk insurance. It includes geotechnical testing, environmental site assessment, assessment of roof testing, topographical survey, co-consultants, legal services, traffic consultants, site mon, there's a site monitor and a site inspector, a special inspector. Special inspections are required during different pieces of construction, as an example. And so those are the components of the owner's consultant's fees. Environmental testing as an example is about, at this point, about seventy, about ninety-five thousand dollars is the budgeted amount for environmental testing. Actually, it's something, it's an extra ten thousand dollars. Four hundred and five thousand dollars was the amount budgeted for environmental testing. Is that unreasonable for a project of this size? I don't, in my opinion, no, it's not. The difficulty in, in some of this is not knowing how much, not knowing the extent of the PCB or expenses, knowing it's there, but not knowing what the extent of it is.
Right, right.
As well as the EPA.
So just roughly with that seven twenty-five, how much of that is passed through expenses and how much of that is specifically a fee to your firm?
To my firm? My firm's expenses are three hundred ninety-six thousand, two hundred dollars, budgeted.
Is that an actual number or is it close?
That's, that was, that was an estimated total project budget cost.
Okay, and how is that, and similar to the architectural fees, how was that number derived?
It's, it's, it's developed based on the number of person hours required to manage each of the phases. So the building committee meetings, developing the budget, maintaining the budget, processing the invoices. It's, it's based on the person hours that are estimated to, to do those, to complete those design phases, to participate in those meetings, to develop those pieces.
Is it based on an hourly rate or a percentage of the project?
It's based on an hourly rate. It's not a percentage of the project.
Okay. So it doesn't fluctuate like the previous item that we just talked about?
No.
And you said it was three eighty-something?
Three ninety-six, three ninety-six, two hundred.
Okay, sure.
Now, we've identified, that number included a component for a specialist to track minority and women contracting. We confirmed with the town that that, that isn't required. It isn't required by the office of school facilities. We anticipate not spending some of that money because that firm is not engaged. So we have an opportunity to return some of that money to contingency.
Roughly?
And that's what we plan to do. Roughly sixty thousand dollars.
Sixty thousand?
Yes, yes. And this is a cost not to exceed unless the scope changes. So if, if the scope doesn't change, our fee at some point, it's capped. And so.
So that, it could potentially go from roughly four hundred to three hundred and forty, should that happen?
Correct.
Okay. And my last question on that would be, when those original estimates were done, just specific for your fee, when were they done?
Our fee was developed in, we were, we were engaged in January of two thousand fourteen. Our fee was developed somewhere in the November two thousand fourteen timeframe?
November fourteen, last year.
I'm sorry, thirteen.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, prior to our being engaged.
Right. And when that number was developed using estimates for manpower and wages and other components?
Right.
At that point in time, we were still considering Phase Three, right?
Correct.
So how much of your estimate was considered work toward the phase that we're not doing?
I don't have a breakdown, a percentage breakdown. I mean, we did do some of the work. Monitoring, the, the actual observation and monitoring during construction, we wouldn't be doing until Phase Three occurs. We, I don't, I haven't broken down what percentage that would be.
Right, so.
It's a small, it's not a large amount because that was intended to be done, for the most part, while the other construction was in progress.
Yeah. I was thinking there might be a pickup there for us for that, but I'm like you're on.
What I'd like to understand if I can, is that number for consultant's fees based on Phases one and two or Phases one, two, and three?
For which fee?
Consultant fees.
Well, that's based on Phases one, two, and three.
Okay, so that's the total project cost?
Correct.
That eleven point six is the total project cost, or at least the total that's been authorized?
Yes.
When we're done on September second, will all of our costs be both for Phases one and two and anything we might have done on Phase Three in terms of prep work? That'll all be within the eleven six, correct?
That's correct. Plus whatever contingency is left. Okay, you did ask us that before. We have identified how much has been expended by the environmental consultant and the architectural firm for Phase Three.
That's an excellent.
Yeah, we have the numbers. So I was reading ahead.
Don't turn the page.
This is your first time, I just.
Thank you.
Okay, go on, Ford.
Yeah, please, that's helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so as alluded and gotten ahead to, we have spent some funds on Phase Three. The, again, we had to go to the Board of Ed to get an ed spec change when we realized that all three phases were not going to be achievable within the budget and the timeframe. And we have been working with EPA back and forth, as we'll see. So pending approval of funding, the completely, windows will be completed in summers of two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen. It is a two summer job. So far, the architect has expended some of the fee coming out of, for the Phase Three design, sixty-five thousand, eight hundred for the architect. The environmental consultant, the main one, AMC, that was engaged in January of fourteen, we've expended seventy-five thousand dollars. And then, and by, ordered and current, in order to help facilitate the EPA approval process, it's ten thousand dollars. So out of the eleven point six million, we've expended a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
So those costs have, have been incurred and will still be within.
Are we, can I just interrupt? Given what you were talking about before with the, kind of the construction costs going up over time, you know, as they did with Phases one and two, can we anticipate that the same thing is going to happen and that we need to revise the budget estimates for Phase Three?
Yeah.
For the escalation costs you guess I'm referring to?
In terms of the actual window and construction, I would defer to Mr. Manning.
Your answer is yes. And especially, we've, we've seen a tremendous growth and a reduction in the number of qualified glass and glazing contractors in the state of Connecticut. So there isn't likelihood that the costs will increase. I think the approach, though, is to move forward with the design, bid the design, and then actually have a bid in hand before this body comes back for approval of any additional funds. And I'm, I'm probably not the guy to deliver that message, but I, I think the intent is we will get a design, we will bid it, we will have a firm number for it, and then that would be brought to, to you for approval.
And on one hand, that's a reasonable approach, assuming there's money in the eleven point six to do all the work you just defined.
The design and the bidding. Correct.
Is that, the eleven point six is the hard stop? That's the number we can't go on?
Correct.
Without, without holding you to a number, I'm just, just as far as bidding the windows, and I know, it hasn't happened yet, correct? The windows have not been bid yet. From a timing perspective, is there a good or a bad time to do it that might benefit us or not?
It's a great question because the fact is that windows have such a long lead time. So you really have to work backwards from when you want to start. So, you know, I, I think we're projecting that we really need to be bidding that work by February.
At the latest.
At the latest February so that we go to contract, we get shop drawings approved, and we have windows fabricated in time to start the construction in the summer of two thousand sixteen.
So February or sooner, I'm hearing.
Right.
To, to achieve the most efficiency and the best pricing and to be ahead of the game as much as possible.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I think also one of the things, as, as committee chair, that concerns what is the remediation plan that the EPA is going to approve? And, you know, it's, that process has been going through the timeline. They, I think we're on our third or fourth submission just this year, trying to clarify and get to a harder number. And the approval process.
But you said you expect that by September? You're hoping for a sign-off that you can go?
Then, as Mr. Tetcher pointed out, pending availability of funds and the ability to complete the design, et cetera.
All that stuff.
And that concludes the PowerPoint part of the presentation. I think, you know, in, in summarizing, especially from the committee's perspective, the, the growth from the conceptual to the design was, was where the project grew. When the initial approval was within two percent of the budget, and then when the design got deeper in detail, we were forced to, you know, obviously consult the town officials, superintendent, et cetera, and determine what is the prudent steps in order to get the, the students into the seats. You know, and the, the high time for that, of course, was, was June when we figured out that the budget had gone from three point eight million to six point one million. And we have, we do have a list of value engineering that, that we did on the project in order to try and get the, the costs back down within the schedule. And, you know, ultimately, the Phases one and two will be complete and the students will be, have a new cafeteria and new science labs and four classrooms as of September third, when they start this school year.
All right, guys, can we retake our seats now?
Sure.
Sit down.
And then, one copy, you said that is available.
Hard copy?
Hard copy. So can you email it out to the board?
Sure.
Great. Any further questions from the board?
No further questions. I'd like to thank you for the update and the committee for all of their work and efforts along the way to get this ready for the opening day of school. So thank you for that.
Pleasure.
Just echo that. I mean, this presentation kind of captured what we were looking for in terms of the original versus the actual and what some of those cost drivers are. I think the one thing that I would love to get, it doesn't have to be now, sometime in the future, is those global key learnings that we need to look at very carefully with other projects, including the windows, Phase Three. Because some of what we talked about today, you know, hindsight is foresight or foresight is hindsight, I always get that messed up. No, hindsight is foresight, right?
Yeah.
Anyway, you know what I'm trying to say. I would love to get your perspective.
Hindsight is twenty-twenty, how about that?
Hindsight is twenty-twenty. Anyway, it's great that we've got these key learnings that we can apply to current or future building projects in this town. So I would really look for you to, you know, it can't be, it doesn't have to be so specific, but I'd like to get some general key learnings from you that we could apply moving forward.
Happy to.
Thank you.
All right. And then, I also want to say that I know you put a lot of work in on the presentation. And I know you kind of went back and reorganized this to help tell the story much better. And I think it shows. It was much easier to follow through this. I think you can tell from the questions that, that we were able to ask more informed questions because of how you laid this out and we could look at what was taking place. So I want to thank you for the effort you put in and, you know, PowerPoints are always appreciated. And then, just going back, you know, the point of the project is to get the school open on time and, and right now with thirty-five days to go, we look like we're on track to do that.
Not soon enough for my kids.
The kids are counting.
Too far for me at first.
Okay. All right, good. So it, again, lastly, any final questions?
No.
Our points? Again, just thank you very much for both your work on the project, but also taking time to get this put together because I think this helps us and probably provides a good model for any of the building committees as we go through and doing this. So thank you.
Pleasure.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right, since that was the only item on our agenda, unless there's anything else to come up, are we ready to adjourn?
Mm-hmm.
I have a motion that says that?
Motion to adjourn.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.